All right, folks. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, July 11, 7/11. Hopefully you got your pre-slurping up. Please go do that. Delicious. So it's 6:30. We'll officially call this meeting to order. So welcome to everyone. Love our guests. So they have to make their here. I'll do a quick roll call. So we're here. Carly Cooper, Director of the Sheriff's One. And then the other table. Oh, good. So I'm Director of the House of the Rosa, Interim Superintendent, T D. And then Martha, Chief Court.
Hey, Dr. Mr. Five.
And then joining us virtually, looks like we have Director Boulderjack.
Oh.
Yes, I am. I am here.
Welcome.
Good to be with you.
Perfect time that you're able to have a figure. And again, welcome to all of our guests. And we'll start our meeting. The parlor is which I'll get the Dr. Morse.
We have some agreements for creating this conversation. We still engage with experience, discussion, and be wonderful. We seek our truth and accept and accept the number of. And our land recognition. We in the Taquilla School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and play is a traditional land of the first people at school. But the Dawlish and Nookshu people have been further. And honor of the credit of the land itself and the Dawlish and Nookshu cats. And they covered this point of the year. It was part of the way for the stewardship of this land. And we started to work along by the Dawlish and Nookshu people who have been married and working here since under the royal. We further acknowledge that the burn and environmental exploitation and systemic conductive fault on the labor of land and body in the building of this country and its institutions. We never have a black ground. People are born and die working the same against their will with generations. We also acknowledge for continuing our vision of the labor, tax, and virus. For the decades to today, all of all immigrant labor in voluntary, voluntary traffic. Worse and undocumented peoples in the building of our community as the United States. As a school leadership, we wish to recognize and border that system that is historically and currently enforced in creating couples among the people who serve.
Thank you, Dr. Morse. And now those that are willing, we will stand for the class. My pleasure. You just stood by me downstairs on the. Thanks to you. My nation. All right, so if we could move to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor? All right. Now to the best part of tonight's meeting. We are going to do the office for our interim superintendent. So I guess we should stand and make this. Okay, see more fun. I don't know. And then we're in assignment. It's going to be official. Okay. All right. So I have to say it first, and then you were complain. That's how this goes. Okay. I think, yeah, we'll go with that. So I'm going to give the Dr. Conze shop to Rosa. I've got the concept of the stuff. Having been duly appointed to the Office of Interim Superintendent, have been duly appointed to the Office of Interim Superintendent, do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Okay. Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Washington and the Constitution of the State of Washington. And will faithfully discharge the duties of interim superintendent of the Taquilla School District Number 406 King County, State of Washington, to the best of my thoughts. And will faithfully discharge the duties of interim superintendent of the Taquilla School District Number 406 King County, State of Washington, to the best of my. Congratulations. All right. All right. Do that really quick. I want to say a special thank you to some of our guests who are here specifically for this wonderful moment. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. And I just acknowledge, so I want to acknowledge, actually, that's Director Harris, who is from Seattle Public School Board. She represents West Seattle. So now I saw her. I just went South Park in Georgetown. There you go. And I also want to acknowledge that one of my parents, she hired me at Seattle Public Schools as a staff on my hiring team. He's a parent, but actually he's become a big friend. And he is Dr. Max Silverman. And he actually works for the University of Washington, the Center for Educational Leadership. And his son, who is a student, anyone, so this is the least. Thank you for being here. And I want to say one more thing. Since I started Monday, everyone in the TV, in the district, and this amazing staff have been so warm and welcoming and just popping in, talking, visiting, and really helped me to get activated to things. And so I just feel very blessed and honored to be here. And it's, I can just only imagine it's going to be better from here. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, on we go. So this is our first opportunity for public comments. If you are here and would like to offer public comment, you can sign at the front here. If you are joining us virtually and would like to provide a public comment, you can do so by using that raise hand function or simply typing your name. Or simply having your name in the chat. Yeah, and that will indicate to us that you want to offer a public comment. And as a reminder, there's an opportunity at the end as well. Are you starting in or do you have public comment?
I'm starting.
Wait, all right. So this evening, we have.
Thank you. This is like the old days, Scotty. I was thinking about nine years ago, nine to 15 years ago, when I'd come up to a lecture and give you all hell.
Yeah.
Taquilla's gain is Seattle Public Schools' loss. Without question, I have worked with this woman. I dare say I have been a piece of glass in her shoe on a daily basis. You. You will not find a more dedicated, better person to lead your district than whom you have chosen. She leads with her heart. She's extraordinarily brilliant. And she's not afraid to make very difficult decisions. And having sat in your seats for going on eight years now. Difficult decisions are of what we do. And we do them for the children and their students and their futures. And this woman is one of my heroes. And it doesn't matter now that we lost her. And if you won't come to my garden, my garden's coming to you. And I love you very much. And congratulations on snagging it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I see no additional public comments. Thank you so much. We'll move to our reports. So we've got the recent equity update and then health updates.
Yeah, so I'm just going to give a real quick recent equity update. So far, the staff has planned, there's a small staff meeting for an after-recent summit. And it's been planned, and it's scheduled to be on Wednesday, August 30, from 9:00 AM to noon. And it's scheduled for all staff to participate. And there will be compensation for staff who, actually, that's not the regular workday. So that'll be taken care of. And then that will be following a conclusion of all of the professional learning with the summit that's already been published and to the, for the district. So that's what I have so far for the recent update.
So thank you. And then we'll have probably a little bit more discussion later to that action. Yeah, so until we get there.
And then to the health update, just to share that our two summer school sites, there's been no COVID cases that have been reported. And the vaccine clinic, to just one more update, and that'll be shared out, we've shared out already, but the vaccine clinic will be at Tefol Elementary School Thursday, July 27, from 12 to 3:30.
And that. All right. So next is our equivalent of our consent agenda. All right, it stays approved. All right, next up is our two discussion items. One is the 2023, 2024 budget and then the board calendar. So start with the 2023 budget.
Yeah.
So the kind of the biggest initial curiosity I had is, you know, you mentioned the advisory, the budget advisory group that you started in 2023, March of this year, really to kind of look at, as you put it, kind of operating efficiencies and potential enrollment. So I'm kind of curious just a little bit about what, I didn't see anything in there on what came out of that specifically. You know, what were some of those efficiencies for Black and white compared? Did the advisory group see, and how were those reflected in the budget proposed here?
Perfect. Thank you for that. I can provide you with a summary document. But basically, we, as in prior years, we had about, I want to say, two parents that were consistently there for the most part. So a lot of the meetings were more on a educational purpose, as well as kind of talking points like around S R, how we were spending it. Same thing with the board budget priorities, as well as the enrollment. Like, you know, what was happening to our enrollment? What are some ways to help contribute to enrollment? And, you know, and some ideas were, you know, programs, like what programs can we offer in Taquilla? What does that look like? So I will give you more of a detail, because that's the only thing I can think of off the top of my head. But I can provide the board with a document tomorrow with kind of what overall outcomes.
Kind of a similar question. Kind of going back to like how are some of those reflected here? I think we're really knowing that we've got expenditures that are, you know, pacing our revenue. So what kind of expenditures have already been identified that need to be adjusted heading into this budget year?
So for the most part, our most our highest cost are personnel, right, there being more. And so what we were trying to do was, you know, what's important, what do you, we want to defer the inevitable, right? Because we had kind of the cushion of the S R dollars to kind of keep our staffing where it was, you know, with the hope with freedom, better student outcomes, things of that nature. And so moving into 23, 24, we needed to at least at minimum reduce FTE. I believe the number that was put out was, I believe it was about six FTE. And I know that sometimes when you have, when you say, hey, you need to non-renew, I guess that could be the word that we use, if you non-renew, that you still have the opportunity to say, hey, I know you non-renewed me, but I, you know, I go to the superintendent and have a conversation and, you know, fight for my position, whatever that looks like. And so I want to say that we ended up not with six, maybe about 4.6. I would have to go back to see exactly what the reduction was in FTE. But again, through attrition and then non-renewals and then doing an analysis of, you know, is it really effective to have a 1.0 teacher for six kids or eight kids or 12 kids, depending on what the class was?
The most known that is, is certainly worked on.
Yeah.
The anticipated numbers by first meeting in August.
Well, absolutely.
Okay.
A lot of those yellow highlights will no longer be highlighted. Yes. Then again, the majority is, you know, the staffing and just kind of working with HR to kind of see what that looks like. I'd rather be very more accurate, waiting to get more information than to just throw and say, hey, I'm just going to say, you know, 5% or 3% or whatever the case may be, but really looking at those numbers and positions to make sure that we have placeholders we need to, because again, this year, we had a lot of contracted positions because we did not have. We were not able to fill the staffing. And so what that looks like from a budget standpoint is that you put the placeholder in the salary side, and let's say a contractor, we can't fill the position, and a contractor comes in, then now you take that money that was earmarked here on the salary side. And then you use it. So it's not like the whole county court that makes sense with having that money sitting here, but then also encumbering it on the other side. Just so just making sure that we have all those positions earmarked and then deciding, well, not deciding, but contingent on if we're able to hire for those positions, what that looks like. So I believe most of the jobs are posted for those positions. And a lot of them are in, are in sped and at the high school, I believe.
I guess is contracting those out will definitely, definitely cost more than if we hired.
Believe it or not, it depends on the position. Okay. If we do like the, like the ESP Paris, it's almost break even. And I believe that if we do the teachers, because again, I'm trying to think, sorry, the analysis, I'm trying to think of which way it went, which way it went. I believe it was a $30,000 loss on our side if we factored in our staff, because believe it or not, again, our average teacher makes about 88,000, somewhere around there, then you factor in benefits versus a contractor, who more than likely will not get extra hours, who may not, as well, I can't say necessarily to set, because there's times where that does happen. So contrary to that, sometimes it's not in our favor to actually hire depending on the cost of the contracted person with the contracted agencies.
Absolutely. The other factor is, you know, we know our S R running, running out at the end of the kind of being ignored.
Correct.
And so, you know, we can hire people and pay the contractor and then you know, money goes away, we don't need to lay out the burden in staff. So that's other consideration.
Correct contingent that there, that there is not that real, not should they grill, but there's not that additional need. And that's again, why I don't have to go back to the, you know, the zero-based budgeting. It's gone.
And I guess, yeah, the need, we know we need more states to fund it. That's given. So, you know, we may need them, but we can't afford the.
Correct.
I don't have anything else I can, for the question. Director Boulderjack, anything from you?
No, I think you answered all my questions.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, so the next piece is the board calendar. So there were two versions of the board calendar that were presented to you. One is the draft one is kind of the more, the, the standard model that we've been doing. Two bit, two regular school board meetings in March, plus a Saturday work session, plus the 5:00 PM for seven. Then included again, the monthly Saturday sessions. The other draft, draft two, is a modified schedule with less meetings. And the hope of this is to be, get to a place where we are bringing just more efficient in the way that we do our work as a board. And so this is just kind of a starting place. But the general idea is that we're having one regular school board meeting per month at the end of the month. Where normally our second would be. And in place of the first one, instead of doing a regular board meeting, we would just do a work session, a more lengthy work session. And ideally, we'd hopefully be able to do this within the context of folks' workdays. So that, you know, the team is expected to come in on a Saturday or, you know, or stay a lot later. So obviously, that may impact, you know, board members like myself, that also work, right? So just, that's one of the reasons we wanted to think about scheduling this out a lot in advance. And then one of the things we talked about just yesterday is, you know, what if we needed, you know, an extra board meeting because we didn't get all of this done? And so maybe placing just a few additional placeholders for us after some of those work sessions for a regular board meeting that we could use if we needed or if we did not need it. And then I know the other consideration around this counter were this specific Saturdays that were placed. Those were mostly just holders. Those do not have to be the dates. And most certainly, I don't really particularly want them to be orally named either. Additionally, the Saturday sessions are primarily going to be focused on the recent equity work. So there'll be more, more learning and PD for the board. So would it again require folks coming in on a Saturday when those workshops took place? So there's a little bit of context about this draft two. And yeah, so what are your thoughts, questions?
There's one more thing. Or then including for board directors.
This is a.
Especially for you, yes. Yes.
In my class.
So in the draft one, you said there is the five, five work sessions that I'm seeing.
Oh, yeah, actually, you're right.
And if one allows, yes, okay, at the two meetings a month, no work sessions plus Saturday.
I did add them to here, but on the first one. Because we always have a four-person.
So this, this calendar, you're right, it does not include the work sessions, but it, it would.
Okay.
Yeah, which are basically adding a whole other meeting on top of this already lengthy list.
So the second one is yeah, as you said, one regular meeting and then one for second and then a quarterly Saturday meeting. Right. So, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of leaning toward draft two because I, you know, one of that. So the way that our sessions are really out here, it's like two hours. I mean, typically, we have one work hour session. And frequently, you know, I don't think it's been enough time. So I think two and, and going into more more in depth, I think would be beneficial. And, and like I say, I, you know, I was thinking, well, a couple of things. One is how do we handle public comment? So right now, you know, public comment, we don't typically do any work sessions. So, you know, public comment has two meetings a month. And if we did the draft two, maybe we should probably allow public comment. And the work sessions, particularly, I mean, particularly interested in the public comment and work session, if it's related to the topic that we're getting towards it. And also, it's, I was thinking, you know, we're close to like a student voice. So if the work sessions, I don't know, are during the day, that probably is more a possibility than like getting some suits to come in either, you know, the, I mean, I don't know. So the two ideas, you know, there are going to go with three to five, three to five. So that would be after school. Students should be around now, you know, we know lots of students have physical activity needs. But, you know, maybe they might, you know, be, be more likely that they could come in and have a comment on something. So and then, yeah, and then as far as the public comment. Yeah, during, during the workday, it might be less amenable. But, I mean, we always have the option to, you know, submit anything in writing and so forth and so on. So yeah, I mean, overall, I think I'd like to try draft two at least for a year and see. Because it does kind of, you know, if we do, potentially we have a work session and then a meeting. Those can be a bit long at times. And then, but then it's not a kind of breaking it up, I think. Probably, yeah, probably makes, makes sense. And then, yeah, so if we could. And, yeah, I don't, who knows? And the board, we never tried this, but, you know, as far as getting students, the best student that I've ever gotten is when we actually go up to school, like foster whatever, and actually sit, you know, with them in a classroom. And so, I don't know, I mean, I have to see what these work session topics are. But if there's one that's relevant to them, you know, if between 10 and 12, they would record that with the bill. So there's, yeah, that would be interesting to me to, yeah, try every two at least and, you know, and then I'd be ready with the shout. Yeah.
Shifted everything to.
Yeah. I mean, it does, it does seem to have some potential advantages and opens up some different. As long as, yeah, so I'm going to kind of pay attention to the public comment and make sure they be allowed.
Is there any reason we wouldn't be able to allow it? Like, it's just maybe we just.
Yeah. I mean, it's sort of like, you know, you just have a lot of, you haven't done it.
Little common. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess. There's always one, yeah. And additionally, I guess particularly if you get something as well, you know, relative to the topic that we're working on, that's a little better. So.
Yeah. I want to think, I was thinking too, I mean, I definitely understand the impact of it happening during the day. And, you know, that we're trying to, you know, everything is very much more accessible online to be able to go back and listen to the reporting. So even if they're able to make it, but it's a topic that's of interest to folks, they can go listen to it before the regular meeting. The quote will likely be approving or, you know, looking at, you know, some finality that you discussed in the work sessions. I think there's.
There's, there's more than Saturday sessions. I mean, the fact that it comes like this, I mean, we've totally done on the second Saturday. There's nothing bad about that. We do it on Thursday or Friday.
It's kind of a, almost a round.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And those are, I think, just the same dates that run the calendar, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
Well, I doubt you're concerned about the 10 to 12 time. Wondering if a staff member wants to come to the board meeting to three to five.
And I wonder if there's an opportunity, you know, we're going to, next steps to be looking really at what, what those work sessions topics be. And so maybe we could have a varying, right? So some maybe that are 10 to 12. Some perhaps when we want to be a student voice, we want to go to the book class, and then some others, something from three to five. I think that could be some possibility, particularly if we know what those topics are. And then we may have to approve this calendar. We have those times confirmed a little bit more that way. Folks can block it up in their calendars.
Yeah, my, my inclination would be to start with three to five. But if there's, if there's some compelling reason to do it, then 12 for some reason, then.
Three to five would usually be the best for me as well. Okay. Any other thoughts before we kind of take all this notes and finalize this? And I wonder if with the Saturday dates, there's probably a few other things we could do. We could just kind of leave MTVD. We could also connect with the two PCSC, our resident people and see if you schedule out of them now before we do.
List of all the things that we're trying to do.
Yeah.
So there's another list of, I mean, there's certain. It's over three calls, yeah.
I think that was sort of retrieved of one between, perhaps, you know.
Yeah. No, February.
February, okay.
Yeah.
That would be with, with more direct.
Yeah, we definitely need something. We got, for sure.
I might advocate that we turn to them in January, but we can see, yeah. Great. Just checking in, Director Boulderjack, any thoughts on this one? It's going to be hard to jump in virtually soon.
No, I support what you, the two that are going on. Think will work best for you next year.
Perfect. I think we'll move forward with some of those changes then and bring it. All right. Cool. So we're, we just to our questions only presentation, and so there are three presentations. And just for a little bit of clarity, we put that irony report back on. That was mostly for, more for transparency purposes, so that everybody in the community could see what the board was getting, getting back. So nothing is really much, there's not a lot of new information there. It's just some updates that the board had requested. So that's why it's on this agenda again, even though we had it last meeting. Was uh the list, any additional questions on uh AA?
So, so that one, um. So the way I understand this one, these two, I'm always kind of trying to look at assessments to try and say. And we do like that, and you know, and we're teaching, and so I kind of had questions about it, so that's not, there's a way to figure out. I mean, to me, this looks kind of like it should be giving us the same information that we're getting from I already, but I understand the the. The historical use of this has been for these intervention programs, not one eighty and the re- one eighty, actually Walter. And these kind of come with that program, and so that's why they're doing these assessments as opposed to just using I already. Um and, yeah, so I feel like, you know, see if there's a way, see if. We can use one of our other assessments to essentially do the same work, if that's possible, I think that's something we've done before and. People decided not, I guess, I don't know, maybe it isn't, but I guess the other kind of bigger question I have is related to. Uh you know, is the, I guess it's an intervention, but so this is presumably targeted at the students that are, you know, doing more grades behind. Um and the question is, is this uh these these programs are working? We've had these for quite a number of years now, and, you know, when I'm looking at the at the I ready data, I come six, six grade, for example. You know, that's one of our lower performing um. You know, grades, so I have to ask, you know, the question, you know, particularly for our two or more grade levels behind students. You know, only like ten percent of the students, yeah, at that level are achieving their special goal, which, you know, I. I already discussed those supports of getting that, so, you know, I have to ask the question, you know, are these. These great ones that we're using and that we're doing these tests for, is it even a factor for students to go kind of the bottom line and that's. That's a bigger question, I guess, that if you know anything, which I, I just wanted to to bring that up because um. Um, yeah, and and just the general comment that, you know, obviously. You know, the the two or three that we can do to achieve the same goals, you know, and get more and strengthen of mine. You know, the better it is, so it's just, I guess, it's kind of a comment.
And Bossler has really disinterested in the use of this, of this product, Bossler used to use it. It's sure they they went to I rate.
Okay, with the with the assessment, yeah, okay, okay, and the. Were they is, was thought they're using the the curriculum as well?
The intervention piece, um very little, a little bit, it slowly like faded away as time went on, my guess is it was like a pet of. Uh someone in.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
And that person either transferred out or moved on, gradually kind of, and then we offered an alternative, which was I rate.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm gonna use to take a look at that.
I assume we're paying for that.
We are paying, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, uh questions on I'm ready?
Uh so. Yeah, so you know, new report, it's not to point out, this, that's a background for. Um Jeff and this doesn't permit this is um the. The charts that are on. Thinking about, no, it makes it big experience, so to be in the nineteen and twenty best, the one that that shows the math students. It turned out, what this one is actually showing is this, it's it's group, this the students into their the different levels. That is three plus three goals and two plus one, they're really on and so forth. And so what it's showing here is students that made stretch growth that were at those levels at the end of the year. Rather than at the beginning of the year, and what we're looking for, we're looking for growth, so we want fifty, you know, which which students they expect. When they were at two or more grade levels at the beginning of the year, and so anyway. Jeff and Shelby and I, I asked that question, and we now have a a sheet of paper that shows that. Which is what I think the more relevant, uh and I just want to point out that um this isn't really, I think, a very good chart to be looking at. And the chart that we're talking about um had both end values and the percentage values and it's put out by two or three of them. And then, I guess the other uh part of this is that. You know, when we get these uh this data, and I always look at, okay, what's the analysis of, what are we gonna do with it? And um one of the things that I was looking for, you know, the data that Jeff and Shelby put together is looking at. Okay, this is broken down by building and by grade level, you know, who is doing really well and who's not doing well. And, you know, the range, for example, the percentage of students that are achieving stretch growth for that two or more grade level behind. Varies from some there's, like, the fourth grade, it type of maybe forty one percent of them were achieved, which is phenomenal, we heard. Last last time I provided, you know, typical is like twenty five to thirty five is what you get, so. When we're in that, doesn't make a good graph, such as nationwide, and I already have a prediction what it is, but. When we're getting forty one percent of them are achieving um stretch growth and reading, you know, that's. You know, I want to know what's going on with the classes, uh you know, there's a whole variety of factors that make up, you know. But and then on kind of the other end of the scale, um you know, um. In, where was it? Oh, yeah, in uh fourth grade at Thorndyke, only eight percent of. Achieving this, so, you know, what's not going on in that, and like, there's always multiple things that are going on, but. I think part of the analysis we can start doing is looking at, you know, these these factors that are having these really high success rates. And figuring out, okay, what's going on in those factors, and and I bet there's at least one or two things. That we could, you know, take to other classrooms to help to help improve it, and so, I mean, overall, when I look at this, you know. We're typically in these stretch, you know, reading, we're typically about, you know, twenty percent of them are hitting the stretch reading and. You know, fifteen in the math and so forth, so um, you know, we're kind of, we're definitely low, I mean, there's room for improvement, but. I think that's part of the analysis we need to be doing on this is, you know, where are they going really well and then figure out what's going on. And see if we can move it to other other places. Yeah, that that multiple thing, I mean, there's curriculum, there's the students, there's the social emotional uh activities that are going on, I mean, there's. Tons of things that are going on in that, but if I let the, I should start looking at using this data to start. Figuring out where those things are, that's to me where we can be, start using, using some of this data, so, anyway, that's. And I, well, I didn't want to, the other thing I asked for was the number two, so so we had this uh program to recognize students that have the one hundred. So one or two off ethical points, which is every one of those students, you know, their critical. What was interesting about that is that when I looked at it, almost all of them were reading, which is interesting. Uh very few of them have, so that that was something that happened. And I know we're, I mean, we're in the process of uh working on an option of math or film at elementary, so. You know, that's another thing I have in this whole thing, but um. Yeah, and it's, it's, uh it's interesting, Kathy, you had the most, twenty five students made that um. Hundred point irony reading, and so um it's interesting to look at those younger students and see, you know. Kind of what's going, what's going on behind the numbers, this is always what I think will be cool, so.
Also, I'm gonna add that, one other thing to talk about, um when I, we talked about strategic plan. Is exactly what we're going to be doing for that date, so I'll give an update at that time. Okay, and then any additional questions on AC? One of the biggest questions is, looking at some of the numbers again, like the travel to conferences specifically, are those numbers realistic? They just seem very low for travel expenses, especially compared to like some of the things that I don't see when we approve for travel. Just two billion, like a hundred million dollars for a travel.
This is what was.
Yeah.
No, I think that's a good question, this is what has been ordered by each of the individuals in this position that are traveling.
So. That individuals preferences as far as traveling goes, flying versus driving versus things like that.
Yeah. Yes, because there, what we've learned and. I know, Brian, I think I promise to speak better to this, is that there are many options, some people will Uber, some people will drive their own car, like cars. Some people fly, some people will only claim mileage, and some people don't even split that personally. So if, I think it's all over. Yeah, that's just for the conferences that people are traveling to.
Right.
Yeah.
The other thing, my, this, this, this is just organizations that have memberships in, which is different from. Basically, we got conferences more, for example, I was asking, but we were at the Washington, so I know we sent people that every year. But apparently you don't have a membership in it.
I think it can be concurrent because you can be a member and attend.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, but you don't have to, yes, it would be a number if you go to the conference.
Right.
Yeah, so that's why, and and while you're talking about conferences, I mean, there may be a lot more conferences that are going.
Sure, I think I was referencing, so like, for instance, in the first one, right, AWSP, there's a hundred fifty dollars in travel to a conference. So that was more my question, it's like a really unrealistic amount of money for traveling to a conference, so.
And side note about EDSP is that they provide in one of the meals per day, but not the dinner, and so people were able to reimburse or claim the dinner. And there's a certain allowance that they're able to claim by zip code.
Right, yeah.
So there's.
Yeah.
A lot of like winning pieces for each of these, but.
I guess this was was being done because somebody, this government policy is said, let's do this.
Yeah, this is the first time we've generated.
Yeah, yeah, which is good.
Yeah, which will continue to do.
It's good to see.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um all right, so we're just to uh our strategic plan review, um so you're presenting this, yes, okay. Just the total, you can hear none of this, so.
Yeah, she has a small gathering and discussing, and I've been looking at this for a while, so I have a few things to share. Um so this is what's generated, as you know, many, many iterations, so I'm. The baton's been handed to me, so I'm going to be talking about what we're gonna be doing with this. Um so this is the um uh year report, which um, you know, high expectations. And I don't have to have all the up and downs, but it's one of the things that we've been working on, a strategic plan that was really clear. I actually love the formatting, so I just want to thank you very much, Gary, for the formatting and all of this, and this was then the collection of a lot of input. Their stakeholders, their staff, um and so this is what we have right now. Um when you look at the the goal, the high level goal, they lined uh two to three very targeted goals under each area. And just to share with everybody, the team is now looking and analyzing the metrics that were laid out. And making sure that they actually are aligned to what we actually is attainable, right? Thinking about SMART goals, you know, specific attainable, results oriented, uh making sure, time bound, all of those things. Making sure that we are actually, that that we're creating goals that are actually really clear uh for communities and schools. And that aligns to the vision, and making sure that it's balanced of qualitative and quantitative, um and looking at this, so that's the next step. So just to share, this is the first draft, um and the team's looking at it for the first time, actually, this week. Uh one of the things we're gonna do next week is we are going to review all the metrics and align some of them, and we're gonna maybe even change a few of them. Especially the academic ones to be uh clearer on SMARTs, and so that's some of the other goal in the next step you're going to do. We'll put those recommendations to the board with those graphs, uh and then the next big step we're going to be doing is you're gonna be meeting with the principals. And meeting with principals that have a retreat in early August, and so we're gonna sit down and review all the data sets, that'll be the next piece on that. Uh review the metrics, uh do the analysis, and then sit down and look at the data so that we can get baseline, uh what, so what was accomplished this year? Uh in terms of baseline, uh so that we can make some goals for this uh twenty three, twenty four school year. Uh and then, but that is what we're hoping to bring back, keep bringing back to the board uh as we go through this process. Uh just like things, uh schoolwork in the class, especially right now, being developed, we're gonna get this, you know. In a place where we have, you know, school looking at this, the support office team looking at this, all of the partners looking at this. Uh so that we can really be thinking about with our teacher leaders as well and some of these components, and so we just need to make sure. And our educators as well, we just want to make sure that we've got a lot of eyes on this, because we want to make sure that. It's actually something that's really doable and that people can really understand in the community, if our students don't understand, keep with their goals. For their learning, then that's something that we have to make sure it's really clear, so I think we've got a good first step. Uh but we have some uh iterative plans to do that analysis and then really uh make sure that our targets are very clear. And actually something that we can all are really uh understanding how that already fits into that, how SBA fits into that. And so that when we come back and present our progress, that um that's uh clear to me.
Yeah, I think um I think you covered most of the kinds that I was gonna bring up, because one of them is. You know, the, like, the academic ones, they aren't really uh SMART goals at this point, they're kind of, they're like the every student will. Um that's not a SMART goal, except, I mean, everyone's maybe, uh but rarely is it a SMART goal of senior student, so. Uh and the other thing I noticed, and this, we may not have seen this. We have in the past district improvement plans, that there's some documents, and one of the things that um in that, kind of. You know, particularly around the academics, when you say um, we were kind of looking for some focus, I mean. We always want to be doing something for every student, of course, but there's some focus, some key focus areas and. And the district really came around with, like, third grade reading, fifth grade math, and period reading and that, just as kind of, you know, um. Key, what's places along the way, yeah, that we want to pay particular focus on, third grade reading, girl, and you know. This great math, so anyway, I hope we that's, that felt like that's gonna be part of this as well.
I think because I, I think the the key for us is when you have too many goals.
Yeah.
As well, um then, then, you know, things get lost, right? And so we want to be very targeted and we want to be connected to what actually the data is saying, we now have a lot of data, so it's just a matter of putting it all together. But making sure we're visioning the right things, um and making sure that our, if we're talking about growth. In our system, what does that actually mean in terms of targets, what does that mean in terms of progress, and what does that mean for a time period? So those are things that we're gonna be discussing, and so we're with the plan for that, for actually on Tuesday, we're gonna start having those conversations. Next week, so.
Yeah, and the other part, I think, just to show us, uh my question was, okay, so we have some of these we're talking about. Uh goals that we're gonna achieve this year, so which one do we, we have, some of these are, we said, we set goals and then at the end of the year, we never say. Which is really valuable, because we need to understand the ones that we achieved, okay, let's keep going, those we didn't achieve, make some.
That's how to make that baseline for this year, so that we can then make the goals for the coming year, yeah.
So we even had, I think it has a baseline from previous year as well, I mean, absolutely, I mean, you'll find out what it is this year, so.
We'll get that.
Yeah. And I guess just for information, um we've had a lot of discussions about, you know, proficiency versus growth and. You know, I I would, we need to focus on growth, uh particularly because, I mean, uh. If you, if you're growing students every year, proficiency will take care of itself, and so, and it's also, I think it's. It's a little more realistic, I mean, we get a lot of students in all kinds of different situations, they are where they are, and so the proficiency, they not look that great. But that's not, the point is that we're growing them, that's then we're gonna get it, so, yeah, okay.
Two thoughts I have, one, actually, just kind of, I'm curious about, something, you just said, so, I mean, I agree with that, uh your growth. And I wonder if there are ways that we as a board could put that more into, like, solidify that more, almost like these are the things that we care about. Um I I don't know, just kind of something to think about, um uh so that it's not just, you know, an individual board member saying I care about growth. Um you know, that's what we're saying, this is really what we're valuing, um and what we're centering, um. I forgot, oh then, I'm really glad you're talking about the metrics, I think just one thing to keep in mind in that discussion, I, I'm just intrigued by that, that the. Scores on the ESS survey are also the metrics that we're looking at, and I think that we should really explore metrics that. Scores on the E S S survey are also the metrics that we're looking at, and I think that we should really explore metrics that aren't necessarily connected to that E S S. E S S survey, not that there can be some valuable input from that, and those can be potentially data to support the metric, but not the metric. Um, and I, you know, we did. Probably way more than that, we got a lot of. A lot of people's voices in this, could we have gotten, you know, more always? But we got a lot of voices, and my guess is that somewhere in those, hopefully somewhere in. We learned something from community about what we need to measure. So how can we, how can we parse that out of all of the data and the information that we've got from folks? Um, what is it that they want us to measure? How? And I think, I think the answer's in there. Um, but yeah, I'd really love to see some metrics that aren't just on the E S S survey.
No, thank you.
And we knew, uh, if you have, in fact, on this particular survey, that one of the things, if we are, um, if we did get into the, the survey. Or the C D, the same idea, was, um, that survey is kind of a one-to-five ranking thing. And we opened up, we got some frequent questions, so we got some text. Feedback from that survey as well, which, you know, hopefully provides maybe some different insights than just the others.
Thank you. All right. I also love the format, so thank you.
This has come a long way. Thank you for everyone just. Um, okay, great, thank you so much. Um, so that brings us to our action items. Um, so the first is the approval of the human resources staffing report. Um, all in favor?
All right.
Oh, did you? So sorry, so.
We're getting our most positions being filled or anything you need for.
Yes, so we are. There's a few different timelines that are at play, and so we've got the central office positions that are still posted. And we are recruiting for those through A W S P, through Wassa, Ollie. And of course internally and other connections that people have. And the, uh, E L A position was resolved by a staff member that, uh, was nominated, who's able to be recalled. So that takes care of that, and then we have the, uh, Europe and the L R C special education position. Already listed, I think.
Thank you.
Since I did a lot of work, you need to do the all in favor again, okay, all in favor for the human resources staff report. No, the goal got set down.
I, I said I.
I know, sorry, I, I. Um, okay, next is the approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four principal agreement.
So.
Second, any questions?
Yeah, so I'm concerned about this. The first one is just kind of a process, my question, so this is an agreement that, um. We didn't, the board didn't really get any information on this contract before, I know you mentioned that the bargaining team, you know, got some direction. Particularly from the previous superintendent. Um, about, you know, constraints or whatever, and so I guess I think, uh, you know, certainly when we do the, you know, the contact with the E A. There's quite a bit of, uh, we have some sessions with the superintendent to talk about, you know, what the goals are, what we're doing, so. And this one, I think, is, I think, actually, all the contractors who's gonna be doing that, um, so that, you know, the board is aware of this. I mean, one of the things I've kind of learned about these contracts is, you know, things that get into one contract, then everybody responds to the same thing. And so I, anyway, that's just a process question for our process, I'm concerned for going forward. Um, the second, um, concern is related to, um, and. Probably in the, well, I expected it was gonna be four, but the, the, um, additional statement for the, the doctorate. And what I, you know, I, what I understand is that, um. The, uh, the group is wanting this as a kind of a, um, enhancement, salary enhancement. Because the teachers have the national award certified teacher enhancement for their, you know, which. I mean, I understand, you know, the, the national award certification, that's testing, you know, are the teacher, they have to demonstrate. Their quality teaching best practices to the board to get that certification. That, you know, is going to directly impact our students. And so I can see where the district would want to pay extra for, for that. Um, getting a doctorate is not necessarily, you know, there's no direct correlation there. And so I just, I always kind of questioned, you know, why the district would want to pay extra. Uh, for a doctorate, because, you know, I understand that one, my principals, I guess the national award, um, certification process had a principal, and then they. Don't do it, uh, because they're probably, I don't know why, it's too hard or whatever, but, um. I can see, you know, giving additional, you know, paying for additional, um, certifications that have kind of a direct. Connection to students, um, problems, but I'm a little concerned about the, you know, the, the doctorate, particularly since it's just. You know, as I understand it, I mean, you could have doctorate in anything, so it may or may not be related to it. So I'm kind of, I'm a little concerned about that or not, terribly. The next one is the one that I probably most concerned about, and that is the, the additional, uh, nominee that's going for, um. Um, technology, yeah, technology allowance, or maybe stipend. Um. And it's, it's in the contract as opposition to the twenty-four hundred annual stipend appropriated at the start date. So my credit was originally, um, what, nine hundred a year, something like that. Um, the problem. That generally, I'm not a big fan of these extra add-ins. I mean, if you want, we should pay people, you know, what we want to pay them, and not have these extra little things added in. I mean, I can see in the teachers, for example, we have stipends for extra work, like coaching, you know, uh, coaching the big team or coaching robotics. Or coaching, you know, tracks, that all makes sense to me. Having, um, an extra one for, um. For technology, my question is kind of like, well, why don't we just provide technology that they need to do their work like everything else? And, you know, we provide technology and laptops and, you know, all that kind of stuff. I'm not sure why, you know, first of all, the way this is written here, uh, we're just giving twenty-four hundred dollars. There's no, there's no sidebars around it, they don't need to spend it on technology, it's just twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, so it sounds to me like it's kind of just a hidden salary increase, uh, they can spend it on, and even if they do spend it on technology. Um. You know, the question is, doesn't, who owns the technology? I mean, this is supposedly related to, um, mobile phones, cell phones, um, and so. I asked a question, you know, so if the use is to buy the cell phone, who owns the cell phone? And it sounds like they own the cell phone, so that's, I mean, we're, first of all, um. You know, we got, and there's no, it doesn't, it's not, so it's not district owned, it's also not district approved. If we start opening up the door and saying you can bring technology into the district. And, you know, there's potentially the, we're using the district network, there's potential security issues, you know. And also, if you have each individual buying their own, buy like this one, like this one, like this one. You know, that's not an efficient way to buy phones, I mean, you want to buy them in a group, it's like you do all the other technology. So that one, that one, that's the one that bothers me the most, that particular, um, addition, um. You know, we should, um, I think, like I said, I think, you know, if principals are needing technology. We should go through our usual technology process to get them, whatever the technologies they need to do their job, instead of trying to kind of push it. You know, through this, uh, this backdoor thing. The other one that, that's not any less, I think that too is, has is. We have comparable districts that are comparing, so we have in the, you know, the T J contract. The comparable districts, and we always want to be competitive, and we have to be competitive in our pay, and so Seattle, Renton, that line, and, um. Kent, I think other four districts have the T J contract now, so in this, in this, we have February, Auburn added in, that's your, you know, I'd say. So that's one, I guess, over time, I think it'll be nice, I mean, we went through some changes in the D A contract to get those, the, the districts are actually right around us. And so it seems like over time, we should get the same for, you know, all our contracts, and that, that kind of, uh, well, that's one that I, you know, we can, we can work on that one. Uh, but, so for me, this, this technology allowance is the one that bothers me the most, and I, and I guess I would. Have ended up voting no on this based on just that one. Um, because it bothered, you know, particularly since it's, it's just the way it's written in the kind of district, so wide open. And you can get.
Do you think they have a ration?
Yes, okay, so the, to answer your question directly. We did hear from the principals that the, the seventy-five dollars, which was the current allocation, nine hundred dollars per year. Was not enough to cover what is required for them to do their duties, which is, and what they need to perform their duties is a robust. Phone, like a phone that is going to connect and, and make, and stay connected, and then also a data plan. With messaging with data, because in some of the district locations, they aren't able to, um, access their network. Or, uh, become, their calls get dropped because of just the way that the buildings are designed. And so they allocated for more than seventy-five dollars.
With my cell phone plan, unlimited data, I have a great smartphone, does it cost more than seventy-five dollars? So is there more in addition to that?
And then this, yes, and then the other piece that was part of their narrative, uh, when we were meeting with them to discuss was. Uh, adding, um, some applications to their phone or adding applications to the devices that they have in membership. Uh, or application app needs and different pieces that, um, increase that monthly cost. And so they felt, or, you know, the, where the team landed was that two hundred dollars was a fair amount. True.
Yeah, but.
In this tentative agreement that we have.
And it's our schedule, the principle is similar to those around this compare.
We did the comparables based on the groups, and what we are striving for, the language is actually really specific about, uh, um. It says that we are, uh, striving to be, um. It's under salary schedule, page thirteen. The district and association further agree that when, uh, the total compensation will be carried by based on six roadmaps. And both parties agree that the goal is to have principal, these salaries be at least the average, the goal to be at least that average. That is something that we're striving to do. Doesn't mean that we're actually going to get there, but it's something that we're striving to do.
That's very important, yes.
Yeah, and in, in some of the cells, we are, I think, at the average, a- as we discussed, um, but. As Lars pointed out, that some of the districts and like Tuckwell have some of these supplementals. That increase the, like, the total compensation for a principal. That, so when you look at a salary schedule, as on page thirteen, you're not seeing a doctorate stipend, you're not seeing. The twenty or the nine hundred dollars currently for the cell phone. And so it, you really have to, like, it. Two people can look at all of this information and come up with different answers, and so we, we had a lot of discussion at the table. And where we arrived was where we arrived at, which is the I P D customer.
Am I correct in assuming that under this, um, agreement of. Somebody purchases a cell phone with this allowance, there is, there's a, it is there. And we haven't established any parameters that are saying that that's district property, right?
Do we offer instead just to say, will the district can purchase phones for principals?
That's an option already, and so if you are going with the district phone plan, uh, you would not receive the second, the second.
So what's, what's not appealing about the district phone plan? What's not appealing about it? Why would people not choose it?
Yeah, I, what we have heard from people is that there are people that only want one phone. And they're fine with using their one device, the one that they own, as a personal phone and a district phone. Um, they don't want to carry two devices.
Okay, so. Yeah, interesting. I, I, I can understand that, like, there are two guys who are working on, um, but when we think about, I mean, that's, that's a natural. Fifteen hundred dollars that they're asking the district to spend for five principals, more than that, right? Our system as well, right? So, I mean, that, that adds up for inconvenience, right? If someone doesn't like carry two phones or something, so that just feels not super student-centered, right? As we think about, as we were, just we were talking about yesterday, like, what are our decisions centered around? And to me, that feels like a convenience rather than a necessity. And if the district is providing tools for them to be able to do their job effectively, then why are we adding even some additional allowance in there? Contract, it just seems confusing to me, counter really intuitive, particularly as I assume everybody is well aware. Of our, the financial implications and the, 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 the place in which not only our district. But the districts across the entire state are facing all the challenges, and so to not, it just feels really strange to me, and I don't really. It, it's, it's strange with me, I'm not really sure how to reconcile that.
So, and. You know, I kind of agree with that, but also, the other aspect I'm looking at it from is, you know, how does the district manage technology? And, you know, if, if we open up this door, then, you know, so the next thing down is the, you know, the headsets, Apple. There's no, you know, virtual, I mean, so we're gonna have everybody buying whatever version of whatever they want that's. That's not everybody that have to go down, you know, managing technology wise, so that's the other. The, the big concern I is, is this, you know, are we managing technology by, you know, just letting people buy whatever they want? And that's just, that's, that's a dangerous path, technology to me, there needs to be more control. Particularly in the, in the, in the, you know, security world that we have today. Um, you know, family, because our technology person does a really good job of making sure. But, you know, also you're sending out reminders that we don't get, you know, hacked by somebody. If we start owning a technology that isn't necessarily approved by our technology department. I think that's, you know, really, we got to really think about security in our technology, I think, so.
I think also just to kind of reiterate, uh, you, the very first point you made, Director Larson, about the process, I was actually a little bit confused to see this come up on the action items today. Uh, because it had never really been talked about much before, um. Uh, so I'm just kind of curious, why is this process different from, from somebody other contracts and bargains? Where we have been more just kind of aware, things that were being negotiated as they were, you know.
And I can speak to what we, as members of the team, have visibility on, which was that we were having conversations with the people. That we needed to have conversations with, and we were having conversations in our, uh, closed sessions for bargaining. And, uh, this is what we came up with.
So where does this lead us, I guess, because?
Well, I know, you've indicated, I mean, this was presented as a, uh, a draft or an interim agreement. And, um, he has, you have indicated that the team would be willing to go back and discuss it. Yeah, but aside, I, I don't know what, I mean, my, you know, like I say, my big hangup on this one is, is that technology allowance and that, the way it's. You know, like I say, my big hangup on this one is, is that technology allowance and the, the way it's really wide open. Um. In terms of um. Yeah, I mean, probably not. Um, the right thing to be kind of talking about, bargaining. Uh, you know, I mean, I can imagine this is a potential little counter proposals, but. This is probably not the place to talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Got another question about the co- the, the cost.
I think it's a little bit layered to it, right? It's the cost, that's a component, I think, for me. Um, I think there's the, you know, the precedent perhaps that this would set, and then the impacts that I have. In future negotiations down the road, um, you know, it might seem like the virtual reality thing is a stretch, but. I mean, I don't think it is, right? When you think about. How, how do we get from one place to another, right? Um, so I think. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a little bit layered, and then I think the um, the safety component, um, you know, I think another thing is. I mean, I know that I have to be very mindful of the things I send them to you, right? Um, how was then some kind of individual phone that they're using for our business maybe impact? The, could that impact them, right? So I'm thinking about that, um, so I think there's just, there's so many layers to consider. Um, I know for me, the big ones, the financial, the rest of it, but so.
Yeah, I mean, this, the, um, you're good to, one of the, the potential financial impact. Of course, the first thing is. As I say, you know, once you put this in the principal contract, that it's then, it's going to show up in the, you know. Uh, an representative administrator contract like that, and then, you know, and who knows where it goes from there. Uh, so, uh, I think that was probably greater than just what the, what the principles would be. Um. So, I mean. You know, right now, when you look at that, or the particular technology one is what, thirteen thousand dollars, you know, which isn't. I'm not really worried about the money side of it, other than, you know, how that can explode. And grow or something, uh. So. I don't know, I'm curious, is the tech, yeah, does the tech, tech department have any? Concern about, you know.
Yeah, coming onto our network, but that kind of happens with other staff members, such as teachers. All the time, I mean, everyone's got their own dividers, everybody's got their own, their own cell phone, their own type of cell phone.
Yeah.
So. I've talked to Sean you about it for sure, and just my, his level of competences and our firewall, and I, it's pretty high. Um, that.
I mean, at a minimum, I, I would like to see, you know, I mean, this is just why I've been. Some, you know, a phrase like district approved, so you can just buy just anything without having, you know. Trying to at least. Take a look at it, check and make sure it's not gonna. Probably follow, so that would be one, like I said, one aspect of it. Um, I know a little, yeah, the district, the fact that, you know. District is going to pay personally for some cell phone and next day they'll park out the door. That's just, that's my, trying to look out for the fact here, which is what I think it was supposed to be doing here, so. Yeah, so. Like, um, this is the guy, the answer would be, but, I mean, could you go back and take the concerns and. Go back and talk to them and see if, you know, can that just some.
As if, you know, that isn't something that hasn't been done before. It's been asked before, and we've done that. Sorry, um, the request that we go back to the table. And have further discussion.
I mean. I imagine there's gotta be at least some parameters, whether it's, you know, here's a list of your phones. Doesn't really need to be two hundred dollars, whereas the evidence showing that like two hundred dollars is the number. Again, I feel like a hundred dollars is quite reasonable, taking out a plan with unlimited data to be able to pay for a few subscriptions. Um, that, that's plenty, um, so what is that extra hundred dollars for really? Um, so like, let's get, so like, what is a realistic number? And then maybe that, that might feel a little bit differently. It feels like two hundred dollars is random. Maybe it wasn't, but I'm, I'm curious actually, maybe how to draw over the two hundred.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that that is something that I can. Because that is something that took place in that session, and so I just want to check for understanding, is that something that?
And let's, yeah, okay, um.
So you have a motion on the floor?
There's no vote, it sounds to me like you guys are going to vote no. And bring it back, right?
Just table it.
Well, you can table it too, that there is an active motion for.
So, yeah.
So this motion's gonna die, you're gonna make a new motion, right?
That's, I guess, that's, I think that's what we, you know, if that's what. People want to do, and then, and then out, go, go back and take further conversations and bring it back.
I think that would be, that would be great, and I think, um, to reiterate too, like, I think in part, this is because this is the first time the board is really good people to, like. Hear much of this, um, and that is, you know, to know. Both of your own, as you mentioned before, um, but so this would give us opportunity. For someone to get some of that therapy, and that would be really great.
Okay, so, I'm making motion to take it.
You do have the option of a close session, that's. To do it in the middle of an active meeting, you could say, we're going into this.
How worried would you feel for that? And then how worried would you feel that, and you want some, some time to maybe connect about this? And then we can do another session. I appreciate that, that's good to, good to know, um, yes, so we'll, we've got a second. Uh, so on favor of the table, um, yeah.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Only, okay, so next is uh the approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four highly capable plan. Um, before we make a motion, um. For, for a motion, do.
So the, the motion is for the twenty-three, twenty-four, the whole plan. Uh, just to share, in, in terms of the plan itself, that was submitted last year, similar to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, the portal, the OSPI portal is not open yet at this time. Uh, but the team is anticipating that that'll be open soon, and when that is done, they will be working on the draft to submit. Um, one of the plans we also have, because this is the first year that the model that was done for the custom model that was. Part of the plan moving forward is, uh, one of the steps we want to have is bringing the teachers in that were part of the cluster model is to come in. And actually help us uh review our plan and make sure that. Uh, any updates we need to provide to it, so that's one of the goals that we want to have, to bring in also teacher voices into that, because they were, they were the ones implementing it. So they're open around the beginning, we want to hear from them, um, exactly. You know, is this reasonable or are there things missing? What are we going to be thinking about? Um, the other question I have is simply just, it's, it's a, it's a question. Um, it's one of the things talking about, because I do know that, uh, was a conversation before that, that people are really interested in. Back to your earlier question, what was the success of this year? And you mentioned that too. So I did want, wanted to ask, uh, the board as a question, just to bring it about, and then to answer. Is how would we like that done? Would we like that to be included in the twenty-three, twenty-four? Would you like that to be done in a work session? Uh, so just be thinking about that, um, because I think that would be really helpful. And when, to help the community learn about the new cluster model, helping the community and, um, learn from the teachers that are actually part of the work, and so. Um, I just think that's something that we can be thinking about, is how we as a community learn about the progress that we've done this year, what are the strengths? From what we've learned and what are the challenges? Uh, that way, when we're developing our plan for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, potentially, it's a little bit more robust and actually has some more information, although, reminder to the community. The OSBI plan is a technical documentation, uh, it's a technical compliance document in order to receive funds. Uh, but there is work that we can do on our website and all of that to really be clear what our mission for, um, for, how it includes, um, the board. So then, that might be two different processes, it's a thing for the board to consider. And we have staff voice, we should include the staff members that we don't teach, or have to be, that are impacted by the.
Yeah, there's one thing to discuss, very nice, over the years is the. You know, sometimes the idea is to take, uh, it was just out of the passion, and, I mean, you know, it's just seen many times where. Those students can interact really well, and the students, they aren't that capable and. Kind of full, the whole group, so there's that balance, you mean, on that, it would be a challenge, but.
That's why it's would be great after one year one to, you know, just to really see what's happening on the ground. Um, and also the values of inclusion, like what does that really mean in the kind of capable, and. I think the other thing to think about is students who are also have IPs that might be, you know, what does that look like? Students that are dual identified or multilingual and really capable. So there's a lot of learning that still hasn't happened.
So, we're, we're suggesting, I guess the other question is. Are we being asked to approve, for example, you know, this, this technical submission to OSBI, so would be getting money? Or our chief ass?
Well, we don't have the plan.
Yeah, yeah.
The portal isn't open, so we're asking actually to get it removed from the agenda. Session, and that we, uh, we submitted at the time when we actually had it.
And, and, yeah, we're sitting in the back of the. Okay, so I have a motion or a motion to. Now, is it removal, it's kind of used table later, or, yeah, to table it till there.
Thank you, alright. Oh, okay, so, item ten D, approval of the PSCSD, uh, authentic anti-racist, that is about a whole twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four.
And that's the man for, um, Dr. Laura Shering, who's here this week, so, um, this is my, just getting on top of, of board with this. Uh, this is the proposal from the PCTSD, uh, related to the outcomes. It was all sent to you, so I'm just gonna just interview it, there's also the monetary amounts for the district equity leadership development. And there is a summit facilitation, which is scheduled, um, the leadership team development. Uh, executive leadership planning and feedback sessions as well as school board retreats. There was a question just around the cost, um, and regarding the OSBI, uh, PCTSD. Um, and this is what people, just to answer that question publicly, um, it's thirteen percent of a, for, for PCTSD. With the IDC, um, that would be above, you know, in terms of the cost or the total cost, so people know. That this is the contract cost, but then with the facilitators, but then the connection for, uh, PCTSD is an additional. Cost as well, so I want to be transparent on that.
So, I guess, you have. Question a little bit for me, and this one is, um. So, I think last year, for rates and equity work, we had seventy-five hundred dollars in the budget, so. This is the, the, this piece of the work, and, and, you know, we also have the building teams and the district teams and. I think for some segments, you may, is that true for this? So, I guess my, my question is, I mean, are we being asked to immediately approve this hundred and sixty thousand? It, it seems a little strange to me to be what we're doing with the development, to take an item out and say, oh, here's one. Sale through without any, this is created to be in the context of the total of that budget package for next year.
Okay.
So, this was, well, this was submitted, pretending it's the team that, um, I mentioned. You know, let's go ahead, do you know how much we spent on this work with this team last year?
Uh, I, off the top of my head, no, historically, and going to, I kind of have an idea. So, I think the Director Larson said, you know, we had a seventy-five thousand dollar budget for recent, the last couple of years. So in twenty-twenty-one, we spent nineteen thousand dollars of the seventy-five thousand in general, so extra hours, any initiatives we had. In twenty-twenty-two, spent fifty-three thousand dollars, I'm assuming that some of the work that the PCTSD was part of that. Um, and then, um, this year, um, we have about twenty-five thousand dollars left. I know the question was basically, yeah, seventy-five thousand dollars, how much more are you doing? A hundred and eighty thousand, eight, eight, eight hundred dollars if you factor in the indirect costs, right? And part of that would be that historically, we have not been all the reason that we budgeted our eight-year mark, so we want to, so I would use a portion of that. Um, and then the rest comes from, um, Esther, because I know that the reason that we work is initiative of the district, so that's how we would fully fund. Um, that work.
I guess, the other, um, question, I, is this particular money, it's kind of, I mean, these are, are doing training. And so, it's always neat to me that, you know, extra dollars, since they're running out, and it's, it's great to do, um, some training that. That hopefully then we operate on our own after the extra dollars come away, so that was. Yeah, yeah, so that was my, you know, is that kind of what we're thinking about here, the.
That would be my expectation. And the board work, that is work that should be, be helping us develop a long-term strategy or a plan. Um, and so, if, if this is what the board decides to go ahead with, the, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. There should be creating a long-term plan that actually is sustainable and. Um, that actually is incorporated, but the other work that's happening within the district now. So it should be all one big plan, in terms of a comprehensive equity plan, and it should be aligned to this strategic plan, actually.
And so, I, I don't know, I mean. As I said, though, I mean, call the fully this one, and who do we get separately outside of the normal budget, would this sound? It doesn't sound right.
So I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how. I'm not sure, like, kind of, how it landed here, I don't know if it's because of the work that was being done with the board and some of the administrative. Team and then eventually, you know, teachers and things like that, um, I'm not sure if it was just, hey, this is the initiative that the board did that they wanted to do. This is going to be the cost, I don't know if it was just more of an FYI, um, but to your point, yeah, this should be all part of. Um, the, the overall budget and not necessarily, so I don't.
Is there any probably table this and, and then approved it as part of the overall, because next month we're gonna be approving the overall.
And more than likely, this may be a, a, a bullet tip, and I'm just like some other.
Yeah, and so we can see how it fits into that.
Yeah, and I think to reiterate too, like, you know, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, yes, that's a lot, and to the point you made before, like. This is the type of, like, integral foundational work that, like. You know, I believe that we gotta spend our money where we share our priorities are, and this is one, um, and so like that, that number doesn't scare me. A ton, even though I, you know, was talking about fifteen thousand dollars in another line here, but, but again, the difference, thinking about, again, really. Overall and impact foundational components, um, so. So that number doesn't scare me, I want to, I want to do it, and I also think it makes sense to have it, you know, kind of built into the. Um, so where do we have that communication would be like to the PSCSD? So, and I don't know either, like, if, if this was brought to us that they needed this approved today to move forward with the work, um, so. Let's just connect with them and, and make sure, um, and then, I don't, I guess it's probably not particularly, we've already stated with the anti-racist summit and. They're already working, um, so, um. You know, we can do this, and as I said, we know we want to continue that work, um, we just didn't specifically approve this today.
Well, I presume would be the, the recent, the summit, which is happening in August, that's, that's under the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So that's, that's already. So that's, that's already identified, this is, this is going forward for twenty-three, twenty-four.
But this is the August twenty, twenty-three, and it was the summer, it's right here, yeah. So when we.
So a part of it, so here's wonderful Washington. So July first really starts a lot of the fiscal budget piece, so when people hear August, even like, even teachers are like, oh, August. The beginning of the school year, not quite, not from a financial standpoint, everything starts September one. So to your point, this Aug, even though it says twenty-three, twenty-four, August. Because the work is a service, and it's done in August, will actually be earmarked for twenty-two, twenty-three, which is already earmarked, it's like ten, something along those lines. That had already been accounted for, so you would take the one sixty-eight minus one, there we go.
Okay. Alright, so.
So.
And I guess my final question is, I mean. It is a good chunk of money, and, and it's absolutely important thing to do, the question is, is this, as anybody, and obviously you have. At the door, but evaluated, is this? Do we need all of this, or could we do a, you know, a thirty thousand, I mean, I'm not nitpicking about it, but I mean. It, it is, it is a good amount of money, and it's not like we don't have other things that we can do, I mean, I want to do this work, but I want to ensure that it wasn't just, well. Here's the bill, you know, and then without any thinking about, is that, do we really need to spend all of it? It's okay.
Well, yeah, and as we, for contracts, and you're figuring the contract.
Yeah.
Uh, that doesn't, it's not necessary that all that money is going to be spent either, so that's. And, um, one of the things that I, we talked to Dr. Borishe, the book where she left, is maybe just been now and. Looking at some of these components, because. One of the things with all of the things happening this year, the future of plan work and all of the pieces, just wondering what is actually usable. You know, and what, and might can be stretched out over maybe, it would be a calendar this year, but maybe some of it maybe going into next year. So those, those are the things we're talking about, um, we're gonna talk about that when she gets back, so, um. So I think it's actually good that we're holding on this a little bit, so that we can talk with, um, just talk about the overall plan in general, but, um.
Yeah, just another. Okay.
Great conversation then, and then all these action items.
Okay, I think my motion.
Alright, so that was tabled, alright, so that brings us to our last action item, AP, which is approval of the overnight filter. For the Universal Cheerleading Association Cheerman, July twenty-four, three, twenty-seven.
So.
Um, any comments?
There were no ones, no, there was a joke, but I believe it would be the, the cheer, because potentially the, yeah, I'll just leave it.
The, I figured that's what we had, alright, all in favor? Alright, so, uh, that concludes our action items, so this is our final opportunity for public comment. If you are going online and would like to offer public comment, you can do so by entering your name into the chat or, or, uh, raising your hand. Just a second for folks. You may want to do that. Being none, just giving you the number, Zena, uh, we'll then move to adjourn our meeting. Okay, all in favor? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.